The June 17th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on kind of an informal basis on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Typically, our meeting times are the first and third Tuesdays of each month. The portion of time that we allot for open podium is 6:30 to approximately 6:55 in these council chambers. If you wish to speak to us and you want to make sure that you do have an opportunity to speak, please call the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date to get on the schedule. Give us your name and subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits after scheduled speakers, or if there are no speakers, we will open it up to spontaneously anybody that wants to drop in and talk to us about an issue. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised, and again, if you have any questions about this, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412. So tonight, we have a whole lot of things under the category of proclamations and presentations. And the first thing that I'd like to do since I don't want people leaving before this announcement is made, I would like to give recognition to our wonderful city staff for being recognized as a top workplace in the entire state of Minnesota in the Sunday Star and Tribune. And we were recognized in the area of medium-sized companies. We are the only city to have received recognition as a great workplace. And I think it's important to note some of the things that went into an analysis of Eden Prairie being a great place to work. They asked employees questions like, "Do you feel generally appreciated at this company? Do you believe the company is going in the right direction? Do you feel the company operates by strong values and ethics? Are new ideas encouraged at this company? Is there negativity at your workplace? Does your manager make it easier for you to do your job well? Do you feel your pay is fair for the work that you do?" And I think it's so important to have recognition of our staff like this. Creating a great workplace isn't something that can be directed by the city council, or in fact, directed by the city manager and his department heads. It's something that comes from the entire organization because you feed upon everybody else's feelings of developing a good corporate culture and one that fosters innovation and efficiencies. And, you know, when you're a customer service organization, it's just so important to have happy employees because certainly that attitude carries forth in their work with the public. So I just want to commend our staff for this wonderful award, and it looks like this. But it's much bigger in my mind. It should be much bigger. So, thank you. The first proclamation tonight is the Marching Arts Day proclamation. And this is kind of a long one, but let me read it. Whereas educational studies indicate that students who participate in music are likely to earn higher grades and score better on standardized tests, and whereas the college board identifies the arts as one of the basic academic subject areas students should study in order to succeed in college, and whereas students with coursework and experience in music performance and music appreciation score higher on the ACT and SAT, and whereas increasing numbers of high schools and colleges give academic credit for participation in drum corps and marching band, and whereas the Eden Prairie Eagles marching band is made up of students from the Eden Prairie High School Band Program ranging from ninth to 12th grade, who are all dedicated as a team to the high standards and goals of working toward unity, artistry, and excellence. And whereas with the overwhelming support and commitment of parents, volunteers, and Eden Prairie High School, the 160 members of the Eden Prairie Eagles marching band form a team of nationally-recognized musicians, and whereas participation in music is proven to improve personal growth and leadership skills, and whereas President Gerald Ford noted the future of our nation depends on providing our children with a complete education that includes music, and whereas Drum Corps International provides all of those opportunities and is dedicated to the growth of its participants, artistic excellence, and personal success. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Eden Prairie, Minnesota hereby proclaims Friday, July 11th, which was last Friday, as Marching Arts Day, adopted by the city council.
July.
Oh, I'm sorry, July, yes. That makes sense now. Adopted by the city council on the 17th day of June 2014. So I think we have representatives from Drum Corps International here. Joe Benson is an Eden Prairie Band parent. Todd Tanji is a chair of the Minnesota Drum and Bugle Corps, and Jim Tarbox is a board member of the Minnesota Brass Drum and Bugle Corps. Do you have a few words for us?
Well, representing Minnesota Brass, I'd just like to say, thank you. We're really looking forward to presenting this show with, in partnership with, what are they, Marching Eagles? Marching Eagles High School Band. I've seen them perform lots of times at the Youth and Music Contest, State Marching Band Championships. They're wonderful. They always hit a terrific response. We applaud them for their success, and we're really thrilled representing Minnesota Brass to be a partner with them putting this show on. And we really think that you'll enjoy it. So please think about coming out on July 11th, and you'll have a great time, I promise.
Could you tell us a little bit more about how many corps you anticipate coming to this event?
Seven corps. Each corps has 150 members.
Our big highlight will be the Blue Devils from Concord, California. They are the 15-time world champions since the current sanctioning body started their world championships in 1972. Minnesota Brass, which is celebrating its 60th or 61st year, they started right after the war, have gone through various permutations. They're an all-age corps, so anybody from 17 to, we've had people in their 70s marching will be there. And we've got corps coming from all around the country, mostly from the Midwest, and they're stopping here on their way to a really large show in La Crosse the next day in preparation for going on to Nationals the first weekend in August. So this is really a prime time of the year for them to be coming to town.
And the time of the event?
I think it's 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock on Friday, the 11th?
7:30 at Eden Prairie High School.
Sounds great. How much is admission? Do you know?
I don't know, 15?
Reasonable.
It's reasonable.
Okay, that's a good answer.
It's reasonable. And you get to hear me announce the show.
You can always, we're standing outside the stadium anyway, so you don't have to pay to get in. Thank you very much. Did either of you want to speak? Okay. So, as a parent, may I give you this proclamation?
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming to Eden Prairie. We've got a number of donations tonight. Mr. Luthammer, do you want to start with the first one?
Absolutely. Your Honor, council members, if I could invite our friends from the Lions Club to come up, and then also Mayor Tara Lukens, if you would come down to the podium. We are very fortunate, as all of you know, as a city from a very, very long time ago to have a Lions Club that's as dedicated to the work that we do in building our community. And tonight, we have with us some of our Lions Club members. And one of the partnerships, one of the many partnerships that we have with them is working together on events. And some of those events for them generate some dollars, and they have been a longstanding contributor, not just to facilities like the pavilion at Round Lake Park, but also to our recreation programs. And so tonight, they would like to come forward and present a check for $1,200 to go towards handheld GPS units at the outdoor center. And they will be well-used, and this is not the first contribution they've made to the outdoor center and to many other recreation programs. So we'd like to invite them to come forward, and I know Mr. Connady has a few words to say.
I'm Kurt Connady, and I live on 11860 Sunnybrook Road in Eden Prairie. And our Lions have been going since 1961. And so we're very proud of them, and I'm very proud to be a part of them since that time. But Lions, for us, is we serve, and that's our purpose, is to serve. And we have all of these fundraising events such as schooner days and corn feed and all these different things. And all that money that we take in in those events all comes back to the community in some way or another. And we do look at people that have disabilities, and we try to give money to them. And then, right now, what we're doing is giving money to the city. And I know you don't have disabilities after listening to your program, you know, an award that you just won. But it's nice because you deal with a large group of people, a large group of kids. And something that Stan wrote down here, the geo-coaching is one of the things that they want to do, and it says, "You get hidden mini treasures." They can go out and look around with that. And so I was thinking, I was wondering if they would consider me a young kid, so I can get in there and use one of them to look for some hidden treasures here in Eden Prairie. But anyway, our people that work with, I'm the chair of the committee, but we have two very capable people here in Floyd Hagan and Steve Wilson. And we have to make the decision as to whether we're going to refer to the president, and if we refer to the president and they accept that, then he has to get permission from the entire, of all the Lions, you know, find out at least 50% of them have to vote for it. So, anyway, that's it, and I present you a check here of $1,140.
Thank you.
And that one, as you notice down there, is not cashable.
Yeah, I saw the one.
The little one's back.
Thank you so much. The Lions Club do so much for our community, and that's just one example. I think they're giving us money every year for some program in our park and rec department. Mr. Luthammer, we have another one. Oh, we need a motion.
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $1,200 from the Eden Prairie Lions Club for the purchase of handheld GPS equipment for the outdoor center programs.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Performers at the Jazz Rib Fest.
Yes, another civic organization that we're lucky to have within our community and support some of the events that we put on. Two Sundays ago, if you were at Staring Lake Park, it was a beautiful day, which helped out everybody, the jazz musicians that were performing, as well as the Rib Fest that was put on by the Noon Rotary. Been told 1,000 pounds of ribs were prepared for the day, and it was a great day to be out there, and many people were attending. So we're thankful to them for a $500 donation towards some of the concert pieces that were there, and they gave that donation, and they are currently not here tonight, but wanted to express their willingness to contribute.
Well, thank you. Another great donation. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $500 from a Dyna, excuse me, not from a Dyna, but from Eden Prairie Noon Rotary to be used towards the 2014 concert series.
Where did that come from? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much to the Noon Rotary. Arts in the Park donation from A-Z Rental.
Yes, we, you know, we also rely on some of our corporate citizens to help us with both in-kind and cash donations, and this is an example. At Arts in the Park, A-Z Rentals contributed the $250 towards the program.
Somebody want to make a motion for that?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $250 from the Eden Prairie A-Z Rental Center of Eden Prairie to be used towards Arts in the Park.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Special events, Kinderberry Hill.
Yeah, you'll see a couple of daycares and educational centers on tonight. Kinderberry Hill, $1,250, and they want that to be split up towards Movies in the Park, Splash Time during Corn Feed, Arts in the Park, and the Concert Series. So we will gladly put their donations towards those events.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donations in the amount of $1,250 from Kinderberry Hill to be used towards the 2014 special events.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Special events donation from Lions Tap.
Lions Tap, another forever contributor, it seems like. And should let you know too that these companies also receive recognition. When you come to some of these events, you'll see on our banners and on our promotional material that we give them recognition in that manner, as well as the recognition of being a part of tonight's council meeting. Lions Club, $1,300, and they have split that 13 different ways for many events, some of them both summer and winter. So appreciate their donation.
Is there a motion on that?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donations, the amount of $1,300 from the Lions Tap to be used towards 2014 special events.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. And the final one is a donation from New Horizons Academy.
New Horizon donating $750. They would like to put $250 towards Movies in the Park and $500 towards the Dr. Dolittle Summer Musical, which is happening, started this past weekend, happening through this weekend.
Excellent. I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $750 from New Horizon Academy to be used towards the 2014 special events.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. So many thanks to all those service organizations and businesses that have donated to events and causes within our community, because truly, a lot of these things would not happen or are very enhanced by the donations that we get from people in the community. Presentation on the high school, or not the high school, the school district referendum. We've got the high school principal, Con McHartan, and superintendent Kurt Trickstead here to present information on the coming referendum.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Getchell, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight about the upcoming referendum. As you know, the district has been working for several months, preparing, planning, looking through the numbers to figure out exactly what is the best path to take. And this last week, the board voted on having two questions on our referendum. And we do have a slideshow, if we could bring it up on the back. Maybe not. Two questions. First question, we're calling our sustaining question. And what it, okay, that's all right. We'll be fine. We'll be fine.
It's not ready? Oh, it's not feeding. I'm sorry, we've kind of got a new system tonight, and it obviously is not working quite right.
Well, we'll just wing it.
Okay.
All right. Oh, Con has his phone here ready for me to use. So we're asking, we have two questions that the board approved. The first that we're referring to is the sustaining question. And the sustaining refers to renewing the current levy, which does expire at this end of the year, and an additional amount that will allow us to remain at our current class sizes, current programming, for a minimum of five years. And we looked at the numbers, and we determined that the average home, which is approximately $325,000 in Eden Prairie, the cost of that average home would be $96 additional each year, or it's $8 a month, which is different. Just to think back to where we were a year ago, a little different circumstance, different financial climate, where we were asking for a larger amount that would have affected that same home over $350. So we've toned back the request, and we've also locked in on what we feel is really, really important. The second question is more of an investment question, and it's quite a bit smaller. It would generate an extra $1.5 million a year in three, for three basic reasons. One is to lower our kindergarten, first grade class sizes to 20, and we are going to go reading, 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 and reading, and make sure that our kids are ready to read by the end of first grade, and again, a benchmark at the end of third grade. We know from the research everywhere that if kids are brought to that point, their careers in education are much more advanced. So we're going to put the money early on where we think we can really make a huge difference. Now, we realize that not 100% of the kids will be at that point, so we're also talking at grades two through six, adding more specialist, reading specialist, math specialist, to make sure that by the time they get done with elementary school, they're ready to move into middle school. I'm going to ask Con to talk a little bit about why that's so important for moving into the secondary school.
Again, keeping in mind that we're talking now about a second question that is, for the purpose of doing some investing, we're looking to play upon the strengths that the district has already demonstrated, that if we have students that are reading at grade level by third grade and matriculating through our system in such a way that they're able to get into the middle school, students that are performing well in all of their academic areas, and can begin to do work in terms of planning and actually thinking about what their life is going to be like post-high school, as early as sixth grade. There is very interesting, the research indicates that the academic indicators in eighth grade are more predictive of college success than any single item that a student does in high school. So being able to invest in a way that we can make sure that two things happen as we move to the district. One, all students are reading at grade level by third grade, and two, that students are on a college and career-ready path in eighth grade, as the high school principal puts us in a great position to be able to take the program that's already going on in the high school and be able to enhance that so that students can continue on through their high school experience and go on and be prepared for college. The city may not know, we just recently got our hands on some data from the National Student Clearinghouse, which represents 98% of the colleges and degree-granted programs in the country, and made a comparison across the entire state, the statewide data that's available for the class of 2011. There's no public school district in the entire state that has more students enrolled in college one year out of high school than Eden Prairie schools. So to be able to invest in such a way that plays to our strengths and reach that mission statement that we have made, which is that each student, whether they choose college or not, that each student is college and career-ready, puts them in a position to be not only successful in college, but successful if they choose military, successful if they choose employment, successful even if they choose to do a gap year before they go into college. If you are college and career-ready as you leave high school, you are ready for all kinds of things. The second question allows us to be able to play on our strengths and be able to assure that for our mission point, which is each student in the district.
So as we look at that investment in, for question number two, it is a $56 investment for that $325,000 home, the average home. So want to also make sure people understand that question two is contingent on question one passing, because we really need the sustaining to really, to make us, get us through. But, so as you look at this, the average home, if both questions pass, would see an increase of $12 and $66 per month, or a total of $152 a year. We believe it's a much more reasonable and doable referendum. We think we have a good story to tell, and not to talk negatively, but the reality is if that referendum, if we don't renew the current referendum, we know that we have a $10 million gap in '15, '16 that we will have to address. And that's about 11% of our budget. And as a city, you would understand if you took 11% of your budget, it would severely affect the services you could provide, and just as well for the district. If 11% of that went away, we would not be the same district the following year. So it is imperative that we get the word out and share the good news about our school, and also have people understand what's riding on this election. So we have always enjoyed an extremely positive relationship with the city, and we're continuing to do that. So we thought it was an opportunity for us to come out and share with you just the real basic facts. Over the next two to four weeks, we're going to be putting together the campaign. What you heard is just the basic facts right now, and when August comes around, we'll be ready to hit the road running. So thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to come and share with you.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight, and I'm sure there are going to be more details coming out in publications for people that have questions. So thank you so much. Oh, you have questions, sorry.
No, it's fine.
Mr. Case.
I didn't know how this thing works.
Well, I don't either.
It's the blue light.
Right.
Mr. Trickstead, just a quick question. I've heard that, and so correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like this is a great marketing piece, that with declining debt, the possibility is that this $152 would virtually be awash, that you actually will be able to tell people that it won't actually be net increase, the $152 will be significantly less. Is that accurate?
Actually, with the number I gave you, is the net increase.
That is, so actually would be more?
After the finance.
Okay.
It's, I do not have the exact number.
So you will be marketing that, that debt is decreasing, taxes actually are coming down, and so the net increase is going to be this $8 or something?
Right. So what we wanted to share tonight was exactly what the impact to homeowners would be.
That's excellent.
And we'll share the deeper story as we move forward.
Well, just, you know, we are different governing bodies. That being said, we represent the same people, and the reputation of Eden Prairie impacts all of us. And so whether people choose to move here is dependent on, you know, successful schools, quality schools, quality parks, quality public safety. So we're all on the same side here, and so whatever we can do to help continue to make the school district stay strong, let us be part of that.
It's truly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is the approval of the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add or delete? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the city council goal-setting workshop held April 8th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion pass.
Abstain.
Okay, one abstention. Is there a motion for approval of the council workshop minutes for Tuesday, May 20?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held the same date, May 20?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct there? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion for approval on the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, before, can I, I should have checked on this. Item P, Mr. Russell, is that appropriate, or is that something I should abstain from for conflict of interest? I work at United Health Group, and United Health Group has funding aspects to the reconstruction of Shady.
Yes, that is one that you would typically, we should pull that one, yes.
All right, is there a motion?
Well, I would move then that we approve A through V absent P.
Second.
Any items to question, Mr. Getchell?
Mayor, just clarification on two things. You have two golden rod items. They're minor changes with relief association bylaws and with the contract with the National Research Center. So the golden rod items are the most up-to-date language after review by our city attorney.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So we have a motion and a second for approval of items A through V with item P being pulled. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of item P?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens.
Aye. Under ordinances and resolutions tonight, we have Eden Gardens. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Typically, actually, the next two items, Eden Gardens and the Southwest Light Rail Transit Municipal Consent Action, you held the public hearings for both these items already, so we do not have public hearings on these items tonight, but we do have possible intended actions. So, starting with Eden Gardens, this is what we also refer to as our green neighborhood proposal. This is the proposal for the thirty-six, uh, single-family homes on the southwest corner of Senecay's Road and Eden Prairie Road, uh, basically eight point three-nine acres of a single-family home development with green elements. As I mentioned, you held your public hearing, uh, for this project on May twentieth. You've also had several workshops and council meetings devoted to the discussion of this topic. And probably one update, uh, since that public hearing would be, uh, some of the testimony received and then also council comment regarding a possible, uh, three-way stop sign at the, uh, intersection of Thatcher and Stanley. So, the action that we would ask you to take tonight on this project related to the guide plan change, the PUD approval, um, and the zoning district change also involves the installation of the three-way stop sign. But, um, since you've received a lot of background on this issue, I'll, I'll turn it over to the developer, Homestead Partners, that will provide, uh, a brief presentation on the project, probably a little bit of a recap of, uh, the May twentieth meeting to bring you up to speed and to cover some of that territory again. And then staff and the developer are here for any questions that you may have prior to taking action on this item. So, we have, uh, Matt Heinish from Homestead Partners, and, and I'm told, I think we may now have the PowerPoint working, Matt, so you can give it a shot.
All right. Hopefully, our technical difficulties are not gonna reoccur here. Um, thank you very much, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, city council members and, uh, city staff. I, I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you again and, um, you know, present this, uh, this exciting project. I think, uh, we've all worked very hard to get to this point, and, and I'm excited about moving forward. Uh, so, I'll just, uh, I know a lot of you have a, a fair amount of background on this project, so I'm going to, uh, for those of you that don't, I'm gonna just give a brief overview, um, generally share the PowerPoint, uh, that was shared at the last meeting, uh, in more of a condensed format. And then, um, I'm available for any questions, as are members of our, uh, development team. Uh, just a little team overview. Homestead Partners, um, will be the developer on this project, and we have a sister company, uh, JMS Custom Homes, that, uh, will be constructing the homes in the project. Um, our engineering firm is Westwood Engineering. Um, Witton and Associates has been working on our architecture, and, uh, we've worked very closely with the Builders of, Builders Association of the Twin Cities in developing this project as well. Um, looking back at the initial RFP, uh, this is basically taken right out of the RFP, the mission of creating a green mid-market neighborhood by employing best practices in community development in order to achieve a model for sustainable and livable communities. And, um, we really hope that's what, uh, you know, that's what we've generated here, something that can be a model going forward. Um, talking about sustainability, I like this slide because it, it really talks about kind of the three pieces that go together to create something that is sustainable, because it's, it's kind of this nebulous term that, that, uh, a lot of people have different ideas of. So, we have the environmental aspect, we have the social aspect, and we have the economic aspect of, uh, sustainability. And when you bring them all together, that's when we get a truly sustainable project. Uh, this, this slide shares with you a little bit about, um, kind of the, the green goals in the, uh, in the development. Um, we're talking about things like, obviously, location, um, walkability, and then we get into the, uh, the green component of it, which really focuses heavily on energy efficiency in this project, and also, um, and also stormwater management, and how are we, how are we managing, uh, you know, the runoff from the site and things like that. Um, guiding principles, this was, you look at a couple of these, these photos here, and it, it really was kind of our, our vision when we started the project. Um, you know, when we, when we looked at the RFP, we said, you know, what should this be? And, um, this, this was really one of our, our guiding factors here. All right, now, now to the, uh, the fun piece of it is, you know, where did we take all of this? And, uh, what you're seeing on the screen now is, uh, is the site plan that was developed after numerous iterations, um, neighborhood meetings, uh, and that type of thing, where we, we brought in, you know, city concerns, we brought in neighboring concerns. Looks like we're having some more technical difficulties.
We can still see it on ours.
See it? Actually, maybe I can try. Does this camera work over here where we can get this one up on the screen or not?
I don't, yeah, I don't think it's that camera, 'cause we're seeing it.
All right, well, we'll continue to discuss. Um, in the process, we, we really have, uh, developed a project that, um, that I think meets the needs of all stakeholders very well. Um, you'll see on the, uh, on the southwest side of the development where we abut the existing neighborhood, we have, uh, we've developed a, a product that, uh, is a, a front-load, kind of more of a traditional-type product, that, uh, will have traditional rear yard spaces. And, um, on the, on the north and east corners of the property, we have what, uh, has been deemed the mid-market component of the project, that are all, um, alley-load product that will have, uh, there we go, that will have, uh, you know, front porches that will face into a green space and, um, try to create a neighborhood that has this very strong sense of community. As we dig deeper into the neighborhood, we talk about some of the, uh, the design features of the neighborhood, you'll see the center green has some space that, uh, that is devoted to, to green space that we're using for infiltration. Uh, we have a tot lot. We have, uh, what I think is a very neat concept of, of community gardens. Um, and the idea of this whole space is to create a place where the neighborhood can gather and, uh, and interact. Uh, there's a park shelter that we intend to have a green roof on, and, um, that, you know, one more piece of, uh, of the sustainability portion of it. Landscaping was very important in this development. Uh, when you look at the landscaping aspects of it, we, um, focused very heavily on, on sustainable landscaping. Uh, we looked at, you know, what is the city doing, uh, in their, in their landscaping on their new buildings? Uh, the, one of the fire stations, I guess, became a, a very strong focus for how we were gonna move forward, uh, with our landscaping plan on this. But the idea is to use native plantings that, um, that do not need a significant amount of water to, uh, to continue to grow and, um, you know, create a space that's, that's very green and, and friendly. Another aspect of it is, uh, solar lights, that we are going to use solar bollards to light the, the green space. Uh, these will be freestanding units that will each have their own solar panel, that'll allow a nice, you know, soft glowing light throughout the, uh, the green space in the Green roof, as I mentioned, uh, we actually have two green roofs contemplated, uh, in the development, one being on the, uh, on the park shelter, and the other being on the garden shed that will house the, you know, tools and garden equipment for the members of the neighborhood. These are some, um, additional efforts that we looked at, that we, uh, we kind of passed over due to various reasons. Um, community solar was an option that we, that we considered pursuing, but, uh, we found out the space was much too small for, uh, what their needs are in going into a neighborhood like that. Minnesota bike share was another thing we looked at. Um, permeable pavers in the pull-off parking areas, um, which we received comments about, you know, deterioration, um, due to plowing and salt, so we, we moved on from there. Geothermal is something that, um, per the comments at the last meeting, we are in the process of revisiting, uh, to see if there is indeed an option for geothermal that we can, uh, we can present at, uh, as an option on these homes in, in a cost-effective manner for the, for the buyers. Uh, and wind, uh, you know, has some obvious disadvantages in a small neighborhood like this due to the, the noise and the visual appearance that, uh, that you have when you have windmills in the area. This is really the exciting part of, of the project, is this, this will be the first advanced Green Path certified neighborhood in the state of Minnesota. And there are, there are many homes that have been built to advanced Green Path certified standards, which is a, the Green Path program is something that's been developed by the Builders Association of the Twin Cities, um, to basically, um, create a standard for, for green, energy-efficient homes.
Could, excuse me, could you speak up a little?
I'm sorry, I'm getting a little far away.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, we, we have, uh, de, designed this development to be one hundred percent advanced Green Path certified, uh, which means that, uh, the buyers of these homes are going to realize real energy savings on a, you know, monthly basis, when they're paying their electric bill, when they're paying their gas bill, um, due to the design features that are incorporated into the structures themselves. Um, each home is gonna be designed to be solar-ready, meaning that, um, you know, if someone decides they would like to put solar panels on their homes, uh, either photovoltaic, um, solar panels, or if they would like to do, um, hydronic hot-water solar panels, um, that option will be available. Um, we will be roughing in each home with, uh, an EV charger rough-in. So, if someone has an electric car, the ability is there to be able to, to put the, uh, equipment in to plug it in. Uh, and also sun tunnel options, which, um, can provide nice daylight to spaces that, uh, you can't provide exterior windows to. A little bit about Green Path, um, and I think I, I kind of touched on that already. Um, the homes are third-party tested, so it's not, uh, it's not the builder or developer saying that we meet the standards. It's a third-party coming in and testing each home, and then providing a report on the home, uh, similar to the one that you see here. And this report was actually generated, um, through some modeling that we did on, on a, on a proposed home that would be in the neighborhood. Uh, and I think the thing to note is kind of the, the bottom bullet point that says eighty percent more efficient than the average existing home. Um, that's where, you know, that, that's really where the, the tires hit the street on this, I guess, is that, you know, we're developing a project that, uh, that will serve people long-term from an energy efficiency standpoint. Different housing types, uh, which I already discussed, we have the alley-loaded homes on the mid-market portion, and, um, we have the front-loaded homes, uh, that are going to be at a market rate. Um, and those homes will be, will be all adjacent to the existing neighborhoods. Our, our mid-market product price points, we're looking at, uh, homes that will be in the price range of three hundred and thirty thousand to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred square feet. And this, uh, the streetscape that you see, uh, is a, is a concept of, of homes that, uh, we intend to build in there. We've had a lot of, uh, feedback that people would like to see an option to have, uh, main floor living. So, we developed a plan that, uh, allows a master bedroom on the main floor, so that, uh, people that, that want to be able to have the main level living without having to use the stairs to reach their bedrooms, have that option. And we've developed that for both the, uh, both the mid-market product as well as the, uh, the market rate. Our market-rate homes, we anticipate pricing being between three hundred and eighty and four hundred and fifty thousand, um, square footage ranging from two thousand to twenty-six hundred square feet. And, we're back. One thing to note, um, on these, you'll see there are different designs to change up the streetscape. The, the goal is to create a, you know, create a development that doesn't, uh, look cookie-cutter all the way around. So, you'll see the center home has a garage set back, whereas the other two homes have the garage set forward, and by mixing these in the neighborhood will create some relief, uh, on the streetscape. You know, a Twin Cities first, like I said, this is, this is the first development of its kind anywhere in the Twin Cities, which is why it's really so exciting. And, uh, this slide has already become outdated because the number as of today is thirty-three. So, um, obviously, we're generating a huge buzz, um, and, and, and people are excited to see the project start and, and excited to move in and, and make it their home. Are there any questions I can answer for any of you?
Any questions, Council? I don't think so. We've been looking at this for quite some time, and I think with the, the changes that, um, have been worked out since our public hearing, and in the last few months have been all really positive. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Council, is there a motion or comments? I guess, okay, uh, I'm not sure who is first. Uh, Councilmember Aho.
I, I guess I just do have some comments. I, you know, I think that the developer and the architects and everyone, the team, has done a nice job with the design, given the constraints that they've been given. Um, I guess what I'm not happy about this project, and I think I've been voicing that opinion all throughout the process, is that I really don't like that the, the city is taking a different role than we've taken in past projects, where we're really, we're really putting a lot of constraints on the project in terms of, um, in terms of, we're, we're asking for mid-market pricing, and we're asking for, um, all of these green aspects. I think green aspects are fantastic. I like it, it's a good idea, I think it's the wave of the future. But I think they're competing, they're competing goals. And because of those competing goals, I think we've really seen an artificial, um, reduction or increase in density, redu, reduction in the size of the lots and things. And I think pushing that, um, has, has caused the density to increase, and, uh, I don't think we're really maybe necessarily taking advantage of some of the green components that could have been taken advantage of had we just let it, uh, develop at more of a, a market, uh, development. And, uh, I think, you know, the city, we have great tools for, uh, guiding, uh, development. You know, we have guide planning, we have zoning, and for us to actually purchase the property and then resell it, and I, and I realize that we've made some progress in that, in that goal of, of not actually owning the property, but passing it through directly, which I'm, I'm very happy about, that we're not gonna end up owning it, because I think city doing development really crosses a different line in terms of what our, what our responsibilities and what our, what our role in, in, uh, development is. Uh, but, for those reasons, I just, I guess I'm not too, too much in favor of this project.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yes, um, I, I respect Councilmember Aho's, uh, perspective on this development. However, I do feel a little bit differently about it. Uh, I think it's incredibly innovative. There's, uh, nothing like it, and you can tell how much interest there is when there are thirty-six planned units and thirty-three are already spoken for, and it's not even been approved. Um, so, I think that there are sometimes when you have to do things a little bit differently in order to try something new and get something done, and I really didn't think we had that, had exposure, uh, in this situation. I also want to say that I believe this is a landmark project, and one that provides, uh, green building options that residents, um, are really excited about and are really on the forefront of how we are going to live in the future. Um, so, this is, uh, it's not a test case. I, I really believe there's a lot written, there's a lot of, uh, research about how we will be living, and, uh, this is, this is it. Uh, I have, I will enthusiastically support this project. I have enthusiastically supported it from its very idea and concept. Um, it's cutting-edge, it's sustainable, it's innovative, and it's eighty percent more efficient than, um, a regular home. And one thing I do want to say, that I do believe that this is, uh, an improved version, this last one that we're seeing, uh, we listened, uh, carefully to what the neighbors had to say, and I know that we made some modifications so that we addressed the, um, the traffic potential as well as, um, uh, the speed by putting in a three-way stop sign. I'm very, very glad, uh, that that modification was made. I think that that will feel better for the residents, that this, um, development will be, uh, contiguous, too. So, I wholeheartedly enthusiastically support this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Um, yes, I also support this. I'm very glad that, um, we had the option of doing the pass-through for the land to get something like this going. It's sometimes easy to think of things and hard to get it on paper and funded and everything when you're trying to do something new like this. This is obviously being successful, it's mostly spoken for, and I think it, once you do something like this, it's a spur for similar development, you know, in the next houses that come through, um, because you're not the first. Not only in Eden Prairie, but it may be for other neighborhoods around the Twin Cities. And it's worth the doing. So, I'm pleased that, I'd like to thank the developer for working with the neighborhoods and, um, the neighborhoods for working with the developers, too. It's been a give-and-take on both sides, and I think we're going to have a very successful, innovative development that will be innovative development that will be good for the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Case.
I support the project completely as well. Brad, you did get me thinking with the whole government constraint concept, and I think that's a continuum, because we put constraints anytime we zone. I mean, there's all kinds of constraints government has gotten their hands into across the United States, and that's a huge debate all the time. And I only wonder, in myself, but in you, or in any of us, where we arbitrarily draw that line. And so this is a little bit uncomfortable for you, you're drawing it somewhere else. I don't know that there's any deep philosophical rationale that says it should go one place or another. I think the reality, well, there are for some people, but the reality is that this project, in its present state as a green project, would not be taking place today without some government participation. And I think, and I know this is a continuum, and this is a huge debate, but I think government has to incentivize positive results that it wants. And all across America and all across the world, good governments do that. There's a, again, there's a point where people debate how far that goes. I think we've modeled that in the city from our cash park fees, which some would say is incredibly intrusive, our tree ordinance, which was an early landmark, one for the state of Minnesota, which...
Everybody's adopted.
I'm not sure, I'm going to say this right, but I have been cautioned that probably if it ever went into court, we might have lost it way back then, but today it's standard, you know, and people went along with it because they wanted to develop and build in Eden Prairie. But the point is that we went out to do good. We went out on a limb, we went a little bit down the continuum, we pushed a little bit in order to result in good for the good of all. And I think this is, this is real comfortably within the realm of what's okay for me, because there's not money. And even, I might have even looked at, you know, government participation in the dollar sense, if it was the right amount to incentivize something else, you know, but we didn't even have to do that. So to me, this line is like back there, so sometime over a glass of wine, we'll have a chat about where that arbitrary line is. But it is arbitrary, and that's why we have five of us up here having, it's healthy, I'm glad, I'm very glad you're here, Brad, and Kathy, and Nancy, and Cherry, and I'm glad I'm here tonight.
[laughing]
Well, I am.
Covering movies.
But at any rate, this is a comfortable project for me to support. I think it shows a real positive government participation to result in something good. So I'm real pleased to vote for this tonight.
So, would you like to say something?
I kind of would.
Okay.
I think this has been a really intriguing project all along, and a very unique opportunity for the city to get involved in guiding a project that obviously is desired by a lot of people. And I want to thank the neighbors who provided a lot of input, and I think anytime neighbors provide input, we end up with a better project. And I think if we went back to what we originally saw, I think we would all agree that what we have now is a much better project. So I'm pleased with that. I want to thank the builders that are coming in here for taking a risk and taking a chance and working with us. It probably made it a little bit longer a process than you typically are used to, but we appreciate it. I am not bothered by the fact that we are basically signing this over, and it kind of led development a little. That is not anything unique at all within the whole of the United States. I think some of the places that we all really like and enjoy and kind of envy, places like Excelsior on Grand, all involved heavy city participation in aggregating property. And in fact, that project required a substantial number of city dollars to make that project happen. We're not putting any money into this. So I don't have a problem with this. We're going to own it for maybe the time it takes to write a signature, and that's about it. So I'm very comfortable and very much in favor of this project.
Sorry, Mayor, I did not mean to cut you off. Of course you had something to say about that. But I am so excited to move this motion forward. I move to adopt the resolution for guide plan change from low-density residential to medium-density residential on 8.39 acres, and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 8.39 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers, and zoning district change from rural to R1-9.5 on 8.39 acres. Adopt the resolution for planning plat on 8.39 acres into 36 lots, seven outlots, and road right-of-way, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. The next item under this category is the Southwest Light Rail Transit Municipal Consent. Mr. Geto.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, the Metropolitan Council has established an alignment for light rail transit in the form of municipal consent plans for a light rail transit operation that will operate from downtown Minneapolis through the communities of St. Louis Park, Hopkins, Minnetonka, and Eden Prairie. Actually, I think we like to say it operates from Eden Prairie through those communities and back to Minneapolis. The proposed alignment includes 16 new stations and 16 miles of double track, and is a part of an integrated system of transit ways, including connections to the Green Line in St. Paul, the Metro Blue Line, and the North Star Line bus routes and future transit ways. And under state statute, the cities, including ours and those others that I mentioned, are required to hold a public hearing, according to state statute, concerning the physical design components of the plans. And you held that hearing on May 20th. And you have until and through, I would say, that may become important later on, and through July 14th, to take action on the plans, or they would be considered approved. And you'll see in the resolution that staff's prepared, and there's been a lot of discussion with council and others in the community as well, that we have, you know, several whereas clauses and several pieces that are part of the resolution, because there's quite a bit to come with that. But tonight's the first scheduled meeting for you to possibly take action on municipal consent. And as I said, you have the opportunity to do that anytime now through July 14th. And I say that because I know there have been other moving parts going on with other agencies that we're working with, Southwest Transit, for instance, that may not be as far along as we may want them to be to take action tonight, so that may play into this. But that being said, I would ask the city attorney if that's okay, provide a little bit of an overview about what it means for you to consider municipal consent plans. I know that you had a public hearing, there was quite a bit of commentary, and you've got quite a bit in your packet, because we've gotten a lot of emails, we've gotten a lot of testimony about what this all entails. But I thought maybe a little bit of background about, you know, exactly and technically what you're being asked to do tonight. And then the project office is here, city staff is here, to answer any questions you may have before you consider action on these municipal consent plans.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to address a number of issues about municipal consent. What it is, what options the city has with respect to municipal consent, what the proposed resolution in your packet authorizes, and where the funding comes from. So first, what is municipal consent? Minnesota statutes governing the light rail transit project require the Metropolitan Council to submit to the city the physical design components of the council's preliminary design plan for the light rail, to each city and the county through which this is passing. The physical design components include the location, length, the ending points of the route, the general dimensions, elevations, alignment, character of the route, and crossing, whether the tracks are elevated, on the surface, below the ground, station locations, related parking rides, parking transportation facilities, and a plan for disability access. So those are a definition of the physical components of the plan. The statute requiring municipal consent relates only to the physical components of the plan, and does not require nor does it allow the cities to consent to the project as a whole, nor to other features of the project. The council has no control over whether the Southwest Light Rail proceeds. The Southwest Light Rail is not a city-initiated project, and the determination to proceed is in the hands of the Metropolitan Council. So there are several options, and I met with the city attorneys and county attorney, the city attorneys of the other cities through which the line passes, except for the city of Minneapolis and the county. And we met with the Metropolitan Council's attorneys to discuss what exactly is the municipal consent that you're being asked to give. So you have a number of options. The first option is approval. You can approve the physical design components as laid out in the preliminary design plans. And the approval is just that, a flat-out, we approve. Second, you can disapprove with proposed amendments. So you can tell the Metropolitan Council in a resolution that we disapprove of the design plans, and then state law requires that you state in that resolution those physical design elements that if they were changed, would prompt you to give your approval. So you can't just say we disapprove without also specifying, here are the design elements that need to change. If you did that, it would kick the process back to the Metropolitan Council. They would have 60 days to review, to enter into mediation, to hold a public hearing, and then they would make a decision. And the decision is theirs to make. They get to review your comments, they get to review whatever happened at the public hearing, review whatever happened in any proposed mediation that took place, and then they make the decision. Doesn't come back to you to approve the decision that they made, they get to make the decision after getting your input. Third, you can approve with conditions, well, you can't really, it's been bantered around by all the attorneys, that they want to approve with conditions. That's where everyone started out. We want to approve so long as, you know, let's pick on Minneapolis, it goes above or under, or not at all in the Kenilworth area. You cannot approve with conditions that do not relate to the design component of the plan. So it's not one of the options. If you approved with conditions that did not relate to the physical design, it would be treated by the Metropolitan Council as a disapproval of the plans and would kick it into the process I just described. You can approve it with conditions or wish list of items that do not relate to the physical design, and that's what's considered an approval, but the language has to be very specific that they aren't conditions. So you'll see in the resolution, based upon full faith and trust in the Metropolitan Council and their continued commitment to work with us with respect to certain elements that we would like to see incorporated at a future date. So you can do that. You can soften the language so that it's not a condition, if you don't do this, we won't give our approval, no, that's off the table. We approve, but we would also like to see. And finally, you can take no action. Taking no action would be tantamount to a consent. So if the council was deadlocked and know what to do about it, I don't anticipate that happening, but I could see other councils having that as an option, that would be an approval. So this resolution approves the, that's before you, approves the physical design components of the plan, and then it identifies outstanding issues that your staff has identified through discussions with you and with Metropolitan Council about areas for future cooperation relating to parking, minimizing disruption to businesses and residents, vehicular and pedestrian traffic, Southwest Transit services, communications with the public during the design and construction process, and cooperation on the incorporation of public art into the process. Earlier tonight, you heard Ms. Jeremiah speak of the locally requested capital improvements, and the resolution also addresses that, that these are items that we're asking them in the future, more elaborate designs, more complete designs, to consider incorporating these additional enhancements, they used to be called betterments, to include these within the project at the project's cost, not at the city's cost. So the resolution that is in the packet is not a disapproval with conditions, the resolution identifies items that require future cooperation between the Metropolitan Council and the city as the project progresses. Finally, the funding for the Southwest Light Rail line was an issue that was addressed at your public hearing, and I thought it appropriate to provide a clarification. As has been reported widely, the total estimated cost of the project is over $1.7 billion. As proposed, it will be paid for with funds from the Federal Transit Administration, approximately 50%, state of Minnesota, approximately 10%, the county's Transit Improvement Board, approximately 30%, Hennepin County Regional Railroad Authority, approximately 10%. No city funds are dedicated, no city funds are required to pay for any portion of the Southwest Light Rail line. By granting municipal consent, you are not agreeing to provide any funds for the project. If the Met Council determines, after all of this process, not to proceed with the project, the project funding is not available to the city for other transportation-related projects, nor, for instance, to Southwest Transit. If the council has any questions, we'd be pleased to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Geto. I think that was a good overview. One of the other questions that I had, you talked a little bit about what municipal consent is not. It's not an agreement that this is the best use for tax dollars, or that this is where those dollars need to be spent. As part of the municipal consent, are we agreeing with the Metropolitan Council's goals for light rail? Is that part of the municipal consent?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no. Providing municipal consent is agreeing only to the physical components of the project, not agreeing to their goals, whether those are transportation-related or other social-related goals of what, or economical, social or economic goals. It's not agreeing to any of those, it's agreeing to the physical components of the project. That's what state law asks you to do.
Thank you. Any other questions for?
Within the boundaries of Eden Prairie.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. It's within the boundaries of Eden Prairie. We can't comment on what it's doing to any other community.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify, I wrote down your five options, and you're saying what's in our packet is option number four.
That's correct.
Okay. Before we get started with discussion on this, I'd just like to make some comments. We've been working on light rail, I think we've had city representation at the table since probably 2002. We've been involved in the Policy Advisory Committee, the Technical Advisory Committee, Community Management Committee, Community Works Committee, the Business Advisory Committee, and the Citizens Advisory Committee. Many of us that are on the council have sat on those committees, Brad, you did, I did, Kathy, I don't think Sheri and Run if you did. But what you might not realize is that when I was on those committees, sometimes I was wearing the hat of Southwest Transit, I was a representative from Southwest Transit to that committee, other times I was a council-appointed delegate to that committee. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about what's happening with Southwest Transit and this whole process, because that is one of the hats that I've been wearing, and it's a service within our community that we all really value. Southwest Transit and the project office have been meeting for some time to come up with a memorandum of understanding, the MOU, that really addresses the cohabitation that will occur at the Southwest Transit site once light rail and Southwest are in there together. Many of the issues have been resolved to the satisfaction of both parties, but there are still some fairly significant issues that remain that will affect the ability of Southwest Transit to deliver the stellar service that it currently provides to the Southwest region. And attempts to resolve some of these issues were discussed as recently as last Thursday. We had a meeting, about a dozen of us, met down at Hennepin County Government Center to resolve outstanding issues, and we really didn't get any further. And as a result of that, there was no action taken on approval of the existing MOU at a special Southwest Transit Commission meeting that was held Friday morning. A meeting is scheduled between the project office and Southwest Transit, I think it was originally scheduled for... I think it was originally scheduled for today, and I think the project office canceled it or Met Council, but now it's postponed till next week. Consequently, though, there is still no MOU that is mutually acceptable to both Southwest Transit and the project office. To be fair, I should point out that it is not necessary for the MOU to be resolved before municipal consent is given. In fact, in Hopkins, I believe they are taking a vote on municipal consent prior to their approval of the MOU for the operations and maintenance facility that is going into Hopkins. However, I think the situation at Southwest Transit is really unique. This MOU needs to address how cohabitation will work at the site with two transit agencies sharing basically the same facility. This is very complex. We all know the great value that our residents and especially our riders place on Southwest Transit. And one of the issues that has been brought up since day one of discussions surrounding LRT has been the fact that we want to protect our bus service here in Eden Prairie, that we heard these discussions about creating a multimodal system for the region, and our understanding was that that did not mean if you're given light rail, you are not going to have good bus service that can get you down to Express. So the idea always was that it would not replace bus service. There are infrastructure decisions that could negatively impact the ability of Southwest Transit to deliver service to its customers in a good way. There are major service disruptions that are possible due to the physical design of how that area is being built. If service is disrupted for any prolonged period of time, that can have great negative effects on the ability of Southwest Transit to deliver service. The issue of making sure there's sufficient parking for both parties. These are not physical design components, but there are also statements about buying out Southwest Transit that are in the MOU. Indemnification is another issue. And while these issues are not going to be decided clearly 100 percent prior to July, it might even take, you know, a year for some of these issues to get totally decided. But we feel like there's language in the MOU which needs to be included in order to protect this valued bus transit service that we have in Eden Prairie. Hopefully, it's just a matter of time before we can get to a point that we're comfortable with moving ahead. But for this reason, I suggest that we maybe postpone our vote on municipal consent tonight. We do have until July 14th to take that vote. We have a council meeting presently scheduled for July 15th, which is Tuesday. If we move the meeting up to July 14th, and we do have time to provide notice for that, we could take action on municipal consent at that time. Hopefully, things will get to a better point of resolution with the MOU, and we can go into this with a better understanding of where that stands. So that would be my proposal. So there's presently no motion out there on the table for postponement, but I think if somebody would be willing to make it.
I'd be, you know, as serving on the Southwest Transit Board as well, I do feel very strongly that we do need to wait until we get a better understanding of acceptance of the key points of the memorandum of understanding between Southwest Transit and the project. And I feel that it's, you know, we have time yet, let's move the vote out to July 14th. And so I'd be willing to make the motion. I think we really need two components to the motion. We need one component of the motion is that we would change our city council meeting from July 15th to July 14th, and the second part of the motion would be to move to continue the municipal consent vote till the July 14th meeting. Is that the correct language?
Yes, it is. If I could, before there's a second, just make two comments. One, as an update to what, Madam Mayor, you said, I talked to the project office negotiating team for about an hour on Friday, and they're going to be producing a new draft based on eight issues that were still being discussed. And second, we have a meeting set with some of the people from the Met Council who are present here tonight for Monday morning at 8:00 to continue those discussions. But I know the project office manager, Mr. Lamont, is in the audience, and I just want to, I've asked him in our meetings, and I just want to confirm because I've been asked twice tonight, is the 14th the date that is available to take the action? And the way I count, it is, but I just want to confirm on the record that that is a date that's available because it's literally 46 days, but the rule is you don't count intervening weekends, and the 45th day would be Sunday. So if you could comment on that before we take our action tonight.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council members, the 14th is an eligible date, as I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. All right.
Okay, so I guess I would make the motion. My motion is that we would move to change the city council meeting that is scheduled for the July 15th. We would move that to the July 14th date, and then I would move to continue the municipal consent process and vote to that meeting on July 14th.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Nelson, did you want to speak?
Yeah, real quickly, yeah, I'm very much in favor of the Southwest Light Rail, but I do think it's worth letting them finish this process, and I would urge all parties in that process to meet as often as they need to so that they are in fact finished. You know, I think our setting aside the time for them to do it, I hope they embrace that enthusiastically and cross all their Ts and dot all their Is and do what they feel they need to.
Thank you.
One last comment before we do vote on that. I think the other thing that I didn't talk about tonight is that, as we've heard in the past at council meetings, that the environmental impact study for the current proposed route that we're going to be voting and asked to give municipal consent on has not been completed, that the EIS study was done for the original route or the locally preferred alternative route. And so I think that's something that I would like to see more definition and more study on that and results on that study before we're asked to make that vote. And I don't know that that's going to, you know, going to happen, is my understanding is that we won't be able to get that. But I think it does put us in kind of a tricky position to have to vote on this, on municipal consent, not having the results of that study, especially given the sensitivity of that area and the wetlands and, you know, the soil conditions in there, as we understand, are not exactly great. And so I'm very uncomfortable with yielding municipal consent before we have the results of that environmental impact study. I think it puts us as a city in a bad place.
Yeah. I agree, but I know from having served on these committees that environmental impact statement takes a long time to do, like a year and a half or two years sometimes. So I don't think there's any way that's going to be done before July, but perhaps if we could get some guidance from you, Mr. Russell, about what it means to give municipal consent when we don't have that portion done, or if there are things that can be put into a motion of approval that would cover that issue? I don't know, it's just, it's a hard thing to deal with.
I think it's really fraught with a lot of potential, you know, pitfalls when you start doing that. If you start saying, well, you know, if it doesn't, you know, you can't put, as we've heard tonight, we can't put conditions, we can't give a conditional municipal consent. And so how do you say, well, if the environmental impact study comes back and it's really negative, what options do we have at that point?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you will not have the results of an environmental impact statement by the time you have to vote. And the manner in which the legislature set up the process, you would never have that. There would never be an environmental impact statement completed when there was only 15 to 30 percent of the design done. And so it's two statutes heading along their own process, but they are not coordinated in time. And so the options, a number of the businesses and resident comments have related to this, and there are remedies available to them within the environmental impact statement law that allow them to make those kinds of challenges if they feel that the environmental impact statement did not adequately address the issues that needed to be addressed.
Thank you. That's helpful. Okay, we had a motion, and Councilmember Nelson, did you second it?
I did.
Oh, Councilmember Wickstrom, okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Students on commissions, we have some appointments to make. Mr. Geto.
We do, Mayor, thank you very much. One of a program that we very much embrace in our community with our youth is our students on commission program. We obviously value all of our adult commission members, but we have a pretty unique situation where we have students that serve on our commissions and serve in a way that we feel that they provide a lot of input, a lot of energy. And we're always pleased, at least in the last, I can think, three to five years, to have almost more people than we have spots. Luckily, this year, we were able to find a spot for everybody, but you can see, looking on the list, we have three, four, sometimes five, six students on one commission. So we're really, really pleased with the interest. And your action tonight is to move to appoint these students to our five commissions for, it's for a fall term that's from September through December, and a spring term from January to April next year, and we will have an orientation session with these students at the end of the summer, right before school starts.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho, do you want to start with the first one?
I think he wants to read them all, actually. Do you want to read the whole, the entire motion?
I'll read the first one.
Let's keep to our tradition, right?
And I apologize to those students if I mispronounce your names.
All of us do.
Yeah.
Okay, I appoint to the Conservation Commission Ashray Monapali, Anthony Poliakow, and Sophia Modius for the fall and spring terms.
And I appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Britta Carlson and Brian Gilgey for the fall and spring terms.
And I appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Courtney Sweeney, Alexander Modius, and Zainab Husun for the fall and spring terms.
And I would move to appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Elizabeth Corpes, Emily Higgins, Karina Len, Tanvi Mehta for the fall and spring terms, and Shreya Venkatesh for the fall term.
And to appoint to the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Commission Jacqueline Armstrong, Pratak Bandal, and Jennifer Powell, and Riley Tillot for the fall and spring terms.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Report of the City Manager, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance, Awarding Sale, and Prescribing the Form and Detail of a Bond.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the resolution tonight before you to authorize the issuance and sale of just over $17 million of general obligation tax abatement bonds for our aquatics facility expansion. And our finance manager, Sukha Cheever, is handing out to you what I consider to be very good news, because we had the opening of the bids for the awarding of the bonds this morning, and we are going to have a report from our financial advisor, Rusty Fiefeld with Northland Securities, to update you on the award of the bids, the good news, and the requested action to take tonight with the resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rusty Fiefeld for Northland Securities, very happy to be here with you this evening. Today, on your behalf, we received bids for the sale of bonds, as Mr. Geto reported. We received nine bids for the bonds, so we had excellent market response. The low bid was submitted by Piper Jaffrey with a true interest cost of 3.09 percent. As a way of comparing that, we were projecting a true interest cost of 3.31 percent when we presented the initial recommendation of this bond issue to you. If I can put that in dollars and cents, this represents about $378,000 in economic gain to you from the finance plan that was initially put forward. That comes in a time where interest rates have started to creep up and a very busy day in the marketplace. And I think what you saw, what you see with these results is the reflection of Eden Prairie as one of the stellar credits, not only in the region but in the country. This is great market response, and I would also address to you, sometimes we lose track of this, if you look at the first two bids, you can see the difference between the first bid and the second bid going from 3.09 to 3.17. That shows you, that little extra edge on that coverage shows you that you really did get an aggressive, strong bid to purchase the bonds. And I think you'll find that if you compare these to other sales in the marketplace, you did extremely well. I would note, as part of this process, we did a credit rating review. Your credit rating with Moody's Investor Service and Standard and Poor's Corporation, they were both retained as AAA, very positive comments in the credit rating report from both agencies, both reflecting the strength of the local economy. But I think importantly for you is city council and staff, very, very strong marks on financial management and your stewardship of local finances, because you just don't get AAA bond ratings in this day and age from either credit rating agency without having exemplary financial condition and financial management practices in place to ensure that that financial condition continues. So you're in a very rare group of being AAA rated by both rating agencies, and it's something that I think you should take great pride in, and it's a representation of the job that you and your staff do.
Well, thank you, that's indeed good news. That's substantial savings, and we were hoping that that would happen. I'm glad it did.
Any questions? If you don't have any, the recommended action is to prepare the resolution that bond council has prepared, awarding the sale of bonds to Piper Jaffrey.
Okay. So we need to make the motion. Council?
I would move to adopt the resolution authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment of $17,155,000 in general obligation tax abatement bond series 2014A.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sue. We have a report from the police chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Introduce this as a, police chief makes his way up to the podium. A few meetings ago, Councilmember Case brought up the issue that a resident brought forward related to our city code, or there was a particular property where there was a concern about the number of vehicles that were parked in the driveway on that property. So council asked that staff look into what our current city code is, what some neighboring city codes are, maybe take, you know, a stab at an opinion on whether we're comfortable with our current code, should we look at some revisions in the code, and obviously, we followed up on that particular property. So the police department has looked into, you know, analyzed our code, looked into the similar number of complaints we get in this area, how that's played out in our community, how enforcement is followed, and maybe also, should we or shouldn't we make any changes or alterations in our code or enforcement? So the chief is here to give you a quick update.
Thank you. Your honor, members of the council, the introduction was probably longer than the report's going to be. But looking at our current city code, right now, we do not limit the number of vehicles that a person can have parked in their driveway. The only thing that we do require is that the vehicles be parked on an improved surface. They can't be parked on the grass or anything like that or in the gardens, and they have to be in running condition. So they have to be licensed, you have to be able to start them, they have to be insured, things like that. As far as the number of complaints, now, that's just for vehicles. That does not count recreational vehicles. What recreational vehicles are in our city are, they're your campers, your boats, your trailers, things like that. We do regulate those. You can't have more than two of those on your property. Now, none of this includes what's inside of a garage, but you can't have more than two of those on your property, and those can be parked off of an improved surface. But for vehicles, we don't limit them. As far as complaints, what we get for complaints, unfortunately, we track these as code violations, so there's no way to pull this one out. But really, we do have only one person that deals with this, and anecdotally, he can tell me that he gets maybe one or two complaints on this a year. And of those one or two complaints, most of the things he looks into are really in compliance with our code. Once in a while, you'll go find someone that their car doesn't run or something like that, and those people are very quick to bring their vehicles back into compliance with our code. But most of the times, what he runs across is not situations where people are collecting cars and storing them, but really where there are a lot of licensed drivers living in cars and storing them, but really where there are a lot of licensed drivers living in the home. There may be, you know, six people living in the home that are licensed. Maybe it's a rental property, or maybe it's a family with four children who, 16 and up, some still in college, some still living at home, but they'll have four children who are driving in the family, and then the two parents are still there too. So, there's a lot of people driving. That's more often than not, when they look into the few complaints we get, what the situation is. As far as our neighbors, there, only two of our neighbors regulate how many cars you can park in the driveway. One is St. Louis Park, and the other one is Minnetonka. Minnetonka limits that number to four. St. Louis Park actually limits it to three, but they do allow for exceptions if you can prove that there are more than three licensed drivers in the home. Now, that gets a little bit complicated, trying to prove who lives in the home and if they're a licensed driver, and what databases can you use to prove those things? And that does get a little bit complicated, and St. Louis Park has said that that is, it's a little tricky to manage that program. One of the things that we're finding in both of those cities is that they have two different on-street parking regulations. In St. Louis Park, there are no regulations, ordinances against on-street parking, so basically, if they're told they can't park in the driveway, it just pushes people to park their, the extra cars in the street. Now, Minnetonka, on the other hand, does limit on-street parking. For all year long, not just during snow emergencies or anything in Minnetonka, you cannot park in the streets between 2:00 in the morning and 6:00 in the morning. So, and that's something that keeps them from just having the four cars in their driveway. When we looked at it, really, the number of complaints we get, really, I don't think warrants us changing this code right now. So, our recommendation is to keep it the same. I know that we are having, we have had, you've had some calls and concerns about a single property, and we have been working with that person, and he is in compliance. One of the, there were a couple other small issues that he wasn't within the code on, and he corrected those things immediately. The one unique situation about that property is that they do have two driveways on the property which affords them more space to park on. But outside of that, that is really one-off, I guess, as far as the types of situations we get with the, with our numbers of cars allowed to park in the driveway. So, with that, I'll just leave it to any questions you may have, or...
Any questions for Chief Reynolds?
I appreciate you looking into it.
Thank you.
All right.
Don't think there are any questions. All right, any other business to bring before the council?
Move adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.